Public Safety and Public Force Committee Meeting for October 30.
This is exciting.
The purpose of the committee meetings are for the city departments to pass along information to the city council and discuss initiatives listed on the published agenda. By ordinance, the committee consists of the mayor, members of the city council, and the city administrator. The ordinance maintains the city administrator as chair of the committee meetings. This is a public meeting but not a public hearing, therefore while the meeting is open to the public, we do not take public comments or questions during the committee meetings. Public comments or questions are received at the regular city council meetings held at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers on the second and fourth Monday of each month. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the public safety, I'm sorry, for the Admin, Administration, Finance, Recreation, and Parks Committee Meeting for September 15th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, do you approve?
Most are approved by Councilmember Tizer. Is there a second?
I don't have any sounds. Let me check to see what's going on.
Second.
Thank you, my Councilmember Willsey. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Councilmember Hall is having some issues, Jason. So we'll get someone up there from IT to handle it. So I want to make an announcement about tonight's meeting. We've got the city council meeting right after this at 7:00. In order to get that set up, we've got to do a hard stop, but this meeting is 6:30, so we need to get everything we can on these two agendas done by 6:30 because IT's got to cut it off and get set up for the 7:00 meeting. Do we have sound or anything yet, Jason? Okay. We'll move on to Administration. Item number two, consideration of the 2021 calendar of the mayor and council and committee meetings. Ms. Press.
Okay, we are working on the calendar for next year as we always do this time of the year. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Do you guys need me to pull up the calendar for y'all to look at?
Got mine on my other screen.
Okay, you have it, okay. Because I can pull it up if y'all need it. Okay, so we just, there's a few months like we always do that we have some holidays. We want to see if we want to make some changes to any of the meetings. So the first meeting that I want to talk about, it's a council meeting that we would normally have open forum. We have a fifth Monday in May and want to see if you all want to change that meeting, move it from the Memorial Day on May 31st to Tuesday, June 1st. If you have any comments on that one, or you want me to go through them all first?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, then for October, just like we are doing right now, we changed the meeting because of Columbus Day this year, and we have the last couple of years done that. So we wanted to see if you wanted to change that meeting from the Monday to the Tuesday again. So that would be Tuesday, October 12th from October 11th. And again, that would be the same thing as this, that would, we would have the committee meeting at 5:00 and then the council meeting would have to follow at 7:00. And then in November, we have on the Thanksgiving holiday where we have both a council meeting and a committee meeting that week on the 22nd for council and the 24th for, for the committee meeting, community development. And what we did this year is we moved the committee meeting up a week and we moved the council meeting down a week. And we did that because we didn't want to have two weeks in a row for our council meeting, so we had moved it later rather than earlier. And we wanted to see if you wanted to do that. And then for December, I wanted to see if you were wanting to cancel the meetings like we did the last couple of years, the fourth Monday council meeting, and that would be the Community Development Committee Meeting in December. So those are our changes and we wanted to get your comments of what you all wanted to do.
Is this consensus vote? What are we asking for, Marley? Is this consensus vote?
Well, we want, I just want to find out what changes, if they want to make these changes, what they want to do for the May meeting, open forum, the October, October 11th meeting.
Okay. I'm good.
November Thanksgiving week, and then the last meetings in December.
Okay. Councilmember Plermo.
We can't hear you. We can't hear you. Can't hear you, Mike.
I'm certainly, just as, can you hear me?
Not as dead.
Now we can hear you.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
So, Marley, thank.
Well, we lost him again.
Thank you for walking us through that. You're better now?
Yeah.
You go in and out.
Okay. All right. Sitting out here to see if that's better. So my, my comments, my comment is basically on the December one. Each, each year, the first time we ever did that, I think, was December 2017, and I was certainly not wanting to have important items in a week that, that most residents couldn't actually show up. What I'd say is, I still feel that way for the council meeting, knowing that I think the mayor has done a good job the last few years of putting all the important items on that early December council meeting. My concern is on the committee meeting because historically, when any council member could request any, any item beyond any committee meeting, there was always the ability to get important items on that earlier December committee meeting. But knowing that that's, that's currently not the, or there's, there's a disagreement on whether or not that should be the practice, it makes me think we should still need to have that committee meeting because we do need to make sure we are covering our important comm, dev, and transportation items. Unless, so in other words, I'd like to either leave that committee meeting where it is or move it to an earlier per month or even combine it with the earlier committee meeting. But I do think that we can't go a full month without having the opportunity for, for comm dev.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yeah, just comments. I am comfortable with all the changes that you suggested and regarding the December meeting, I would be comfortable combining the two committee meetings to that Tuesday, December 14th. If that's suitable for the majority.
Mayor Henry.
I just want to make certain that if we combine the meetings, we're talking about a lengthy meeting in excess of four hours. Are you all comfortable with that? Just a question. So, so my, an additional question would be, we've got two committees that if something isn't urgent, it can be put on the other committee meeting, which.
Correct.
And staff is going to tell us if it's urgent or if they need a decision sooner rather than later. Are we going to leave it up to staff to decide what gets bumped up to that early December meeting? Or is council going to commit to a four to six hour meeting in early December to cover both committees? I'm just asking.
Councilmember Willsey.
I was just wondering if it would be possible to set it at a two hour limit for that Tuesday, December 14th and try to manage it so that it fits within a two hour window, given that some things could be planned earlier or postponed until January.
And let me just say this, that's a difficult ask because in recent history, we have never, tonight, we're going to have a committee meeting that's confined to one and a half hours just by council time constraint. But I can tell you from my experience is that our committee meetings are lasting anywhere from two and a half to three hours. So I just want to manage expectations here.
Councilmember Judy.
Yes, I would say that why don't we do it on the 15th after the committee meeting on the 14th, the morning of the 15th? Just go committee 15th, morning of the, 14th committee on the morning of the 15th. That way we break it up into two. The committee on the morning of Wednesday, the 18th, or sorry, Wednesday, the 15th would just be, you know, a sacrifice to go committee, council committee, committee to make sure we get stuff in and have the last two weeks open in December. I'd be up for that if everybody else would, rather than have a four and a half hour meeting because when it gets to that, it gets a little ridiculous and I don't think people stay online to watch and, you know, if we want to make it accessible for the citizens, I think it needs to stay under two hours.
Councilmember Soprano.
Thank you. So I have two comments for October 11th and 12th and see if it's possible to combine, move the 11th to the 12th. My comment number one. The number two is the week of December 27th. I believe that we've been trying to avoid having public meetings in between Christmas and New Year. I think I've been doing, what, maybe a couple of years this. So I will support moving the 29, the committee meeting of the 29th to the 15th and then the 27th even getting more items on the 13th or pass to the 20 for the following year. So, because I think that, you know, in between Christmas, if we really want to encourage public engagement and participation, that is not the best week to have public participation the week of December 27th. So that is my two comments, October and December.
Councilmember Plermo.
Thank you. So I'd say again, because we've, we've actually had a, can you hear me? Yeah. So we've had, we've had experience with, again, in the past, and if you looked at 2016, you look at 2017, we, we, where we did have just that one committee meeting and it wasn't four to five hours. It being just only if there was an urgent item that was brought forward. Just on who should be determining if it's urgent, I feel it's the residents that should be really in charge and driving this. And that's where I feel it should be, it should be an elected representative and, and the committee discussing if something is, something is urgent. But I think it's, it's very realistic and very doable, just as we've done in the past, to be able to have the committee be that, that night. And again, knowing that it's just for important items, any other items can either be going in November or going in January. So I'm comfortable with that. I'm also comfortable with if there's a preference to have council Monday night, committee Tuesday night, and then Wednesday morning at 8:00 AM, it just, just moving up the other few weeks like Councilmember Judy brought up. If that's, if that's the preference, that works for me as well. I just, I just want to make sure that, that if residents just deem there's an important item, there's the ability for elected, elected representatives to want to discuss that item.
One.
Go ahead.
Might I suggest, because as you all know, I served on council when we had meetings every Monday and we had committee meetings four times a month, that if we have urgent issues, that we take those up on an additional council meeting or committee meeting. It's, it's not difficult to do. Like I said, we're down to two committee meetings and two council meetings a month. We can go to four to four and, you know, we can pack it in. I do agree that having committee or council meetings between Christmas and New Year, New Years, there is a perception there that we're trying to float things in under the radar and residents are not aware of it because they're busy with family, friends, celebrations. I do agree with that. So I do agree that we should not pack agenda items in that area. However, we have the ability to set additional meetings and I would highly suggest that we do that rather than doing marathon meetings.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I, I, I am in agreement on the May 31st, moving that to June 1st, the October 11th, 12th, the December, what, Councilmember Judy and I think that's what Councilmember Plermo is also saying, the 13th, 14th, 15th. I have a question. What did, for the Thanksgiving week, the 22nd and 24th, I missed what we're talking about there.
Okay, because both of those meetings are Thanksgiving week and same like with this year, what we did is we moved the Community Development Committee Meeting up a week, but then we took the mayor and council meeting that would have been Thanksgiving week and we've moved it to November, whatever, November 30th. So we moved it down right after Thanksgiving holiday week.
Could we do the same thing in November that we're doing in December with the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? Or am I missing something?
Hold on, wait, hold on, let me.
Yeah, if I could just, I think in November, if we could move the 22nd meeting to the 29th and have council meeting followed by open mic night, I mean, I think that might be a solution that would work for 2021. And then move up the, the meeting on the 24th to the 17th.
Right. And I, you know, I didn't even realize when I put this together that the 29th is an open forum in November.
Right.
Um, yeah, I think we, that's how we decided this year to do for 2020 because we didn't want a committee, we didn't want the council meeting, like, it didn't give staff enough time to have a council meeting one Monday and then the very following Monday to have another council meeting. So that's why we moved it down and we moved the committee, since the committee is only once a month, it didn't matter if we moved it up or down while council, we didn't want it two weeks in a row in order for staff to have enough time to prep things. So if you want, I mean, that's a suggestion to, I mean, to move it to, you're talking about to the 29th and then have open forum after that.
Correct. Or before, which I think we may have done it before in the past, but whatever seems to work best from our experience.
Councilmember Plermo.
Thank you. So I'd say I'm supportive of Councilmember Willsey, Willsey's idea of open mic night. I'm also supportive of, of doing it like Councilmember Hall mentioned earlier. I do think we need to make it so that we're not, we're not looking like we're trying to push some stuff in while most are getting ready for Thanksgiving. I think those are great ideas. I'd also say I, I, we certainly have some marathon meetings. I think we also have some very short ones. And, and I think, I think in wanting to make things easier for residents, we certainly would not want to make residents have to look at agendas and then potentially be following meetings for, four times a month, or if I should say four weeks a month. So I think, I think there definitely was some improvement made when, when reducing that schedule. And I think we want to just come with that right balance where we don't have too long of a meeting, but also they're not, they're not so frequently that it's hard for, for residents to be able to easily follow at all.
Any further questions or discussion? What is the pleasure of the council?
I motion, I motion to what we just said about moving all the dates, putting the open forum with the council meeting in November and then in December going 13th, 14th, and 15th with the, with the two committees on the 14th and 15th and canceling the week of the 27th, the council meeting and committee meeting.
Can I just, can I just confirm? So in November, we're still then going to move the community development up to the 17th from the 24th.
Yes, correct. Yes.
Second.
All right, I'm being told we're not voting on this. We're just doing consensus, so that's all we need to do. So we're good to go on this.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to number three, consideration of a fiscal year 2021 tree planting partnership application from the Martin Landings Foundation, who had planted eight trees at the Holcombe Bridge entrance to Martin, Martin's Landing. Mr. Blitch.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
The Martin's Landing Foundation is seeking a tree planting partnership application for the removal of tin Bradford pear trees at the entrance of their subdivision. They want to replace them with eight Chinese elm trees in, in the median specifically off of Holcombe Bridge Road. So the, the trees will actually be on Martin's Landing Drive. The optimum time to plant trees, as you know, is from November through April of each year and the Martin's Landing Foundation folks have proposed a timeline of December 7th through the 21st of 2020. And they are sinking $3,847 and they will provide at least that in cash. There are other costs associated that they haven't added up, like the old tree removal, stump grinding, preparing the site, any kind of labor that's involved. The application has been reviewed by our folks in transportation, environmental, public works, the arborist in community development, and planning and zoning. And we've received some favorable comments back. There's some questions about whether or not to install a tree barrier to prevent the roots from the trees from messing up the concrete and asphalt there at the entrance. It would be about seven to $10 per linear foot to put down the barrier and that would be something that we would ask the contractor to put down at the Martin's Landing Foundation. The costs are not known at this time, but we would work with them to split the cost. If there's any other, or if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Floor is open. Councilmember Plermo.
Thank you. So I just want to be completely clear. So basically, the, the request here is that the city is providing $3,847 in funds and Martin's Landing, the neighborhood, is providing $3,847 in, in funds. Is that accurate?
There's probably additional costs to beat the transportation's request for the root barrier.
Sure. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tizer.
I should approve.
Most are approved by Councilmember Tizer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, Danny.
Thank you.
Item number four, presentation of the Volunteer Roswell program. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. I'll be quick on this. This is just a quick discussion to show you all what we've done here at staff on putting together the new initiative. I'm going to share my screen with you for just a moment. The city staff has been looking for ways to increase volunteer opportunities throughout the community. So we put together a team, Danny Blitch, you just heard from, Karen Ziddermer, Ally Daniels, Julie Breckton, myself, to try to come up with a, a citywide one portal, one place to go to be able to find volunteer opportunities, not only for citizens, but also for employees. Councilmember Judy had approached, well, talked to me about it, gosh, it was pre-COVID, I think, when we first started a discussion on how to maybe get employees more involved in community volunteering. So it's turned into a little bit more than that. We actually worked with our nonprofit partners to come up with this program called Volunteer Roswell. It's on the website. I'm doing the presentation today because it goes live tomorrow. If everything goes well, we'll have everything put out, but it's just a couple of clicks away. When you go to our website, right down here, it's got its own button. Now it's called Volunteer Roswell and with one click, it takes you to the main page. And then on that main page, it gives you all the information about the program, what it does, how to volunteer, why to volunteer, and what it's about. And then if you do one more click, once you're in the program, the next click actually takes you to the page where the volunteer opportunities are at. So we're working with our local nonprofits through our nonprofit partnership program to have them all work on the same portal because they all do volunteering opportunities differently. So we've worked with all of these people to come in, all these different organizations, and put their community volunteer opportunities into one portal. So now people can go to our website with two clicks, they can get right to where they want to see, hey, what's going on in the community this week, this month? What do I want to volunteer in? And there's a couple of them that are already on here. We hadn't even gone live yet. These folks wanted to get their stuff on. There's a food drive volunteers. If you're interested in that, then all you do is go into that particular program. It comes up, it loads it in, and what it does is it gives the nonprofits an opportunity to put in time slots for you to sign up for different times during the day. This one happens to be unlimited. They'll take all the people they can get. You can also have volunteer efforts that will say, I need 10 people. And then as it fills in, once it gets to the appropriate amount of people, then it's full and they know it's full. So just wanted to show that to you, let you know, we're really excited about it and we'll be unveiling this tomorrow through all of the different channels that we have. But it's an opportunity for maybe departments to be able to go in and see a certain volunteer effort and say, you know what? I like that. Hey, comm dev, how many are you going to put in that thing? And, you know, we could start having some competitions and, and, but it's all about getting back in and giving back to the community. And if we get it all in one place, it seems to be, the more people that come, the more volunteers you have, the more success you have in the program. So wanted to put that out there and show you. And so Councilmember Judy, I know this is probably a long way from what you were thinking originally, but it kind of morphed and it took a little time, but I appreciate you bringing up just the thought about employees getting, you know, getting active in the community and, and so we're excited about this. I don't know if there's any comments. I'm done. So if you have anything.
Thanks, Michael. Great program. It was very good. Councilmember Judy.
No, Michael and everybody that worked on this, awesome. It's actually more than I thought. That's really cool. I think that the more staff and us as council people and elected officials get into, out into the community and, and let people know we're human is, helps a lot. So I love this and excited that we can give back to the community and more people here in this building can have access to it. So good work.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yes. Thank you, Michael. Again, this looks great and I appreciate you putting the work into it. I know especially during COVID, there was a lot of requests from community members, well, how can we get involved? So this is great to have one resource that we can send them to. And, and one question I had, or just to encourage folks in the community to take a look at is, are there opportunities available for people of all ages, for families and things like that, or is it specifically more adult oriented?
No, there is actually. If you noticed, one of the, whatever, about three of the, of the events were from Bucket of Balloons and they helped families that can't put together, like, these, these were for birthday parties for some younger children that don't have the means to be able to have that. So this nonprofit actually works with that and you can sign up to be a part of a birthday party for a child that might otherwise not be able to do that. So some really cool stuff, but I think it's all ages in the community.
Good. All right, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. And thank you, Michael. This is, it's really exciting that the city's got this. I'm just hoping that we can reach out to other, like the churches and schools. If they can kind of tag team with the city, I think, you know, can really, really grow because there's always kids looking for service hours and this would be a good place to drive them to find their service hours.
Sure. Sure, yeah. And I hope it can expand. We started out with our nonprofit partnership program because it's all of our community nonprofits. They've kind of been vetted, so we, you know, we know they're in it to be for real. They get this same program that we have so that all ties together. So we'll get it out, get it unrolled and make sure it's going like it should, but then yeah, if we can expand it, we certainly will.
Thank you, Michael. It's a great initiative and nice work to you and your team. Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments from the council? Okay, if not, we're going to move on to finance. Item number five, consideration for the mayor and/or city administrator to award a contract to PFM Asset Management for Investment Advisory Services in an amount not to exceed $25,000 with annual renewal options for a maximum of five years. Mr. Luckett.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, great. Just to give you a little bit of background here, so as you might remember, seems like a lifetime ago, back in February, at the committee meeting, staff did request guidance from the mayor and council on the potential of hiring an investment advisory firm to help manage a portion of the city's investment portfolio. At that meeting, the mayor and council did express support to move forward with soliciting investment advisory services. So that's why we're here this evening. Before I move forward, I just wanted to recap a little bit about how the city's involved in investing and what investment advisory services look like. So basically, you know, finance staff, as I told you back in February, we are responsible for managing the city's investment portfolio. That mainly includes funds that are like our emergency reserve funds. It also includes funds that have been allocated for capital projects that may take several years to complete, so they're in progress. And so we are responsible for managing that portfolio. Our investments consist of, you know, it can be the funds that we have in our, the city's bank deposits, but we also utilize other investment tools that are in accordance with the city's investment policy as well as state law. So investment advisory services, just to give you a little bit of information on that, the investment advisory firm that we are recommending, investment advisory services in general, the firm acts in the best interest of the city. So they have a fiduciary responsibility. Firms are regulated by the Securities and Exchange Commission. They must abide by the city's investment policy as well as the state law that governs the city's investments. Typically, when you look at an agreement, you're talking about either a discretionary or nondiscretionary agreement. And what we mean by that is a discretionary agreement, the investment advisory firm has the ability to move forward on buying or selling that investments that comply with the city's investment policy. A nondiscretionary agreement means that they may make advice or recommendations to the city, but that we would have the ultimate decision on each purchase or sell. All cash and all securities are held by the city, not the investment advisory firm, and only the city can initiate cash transactions. So there's no fund that are actually held by the investment advisory firm. The investment advisory firm also utilizes a competitive bidding process when it comes to purchasing investments, and so we're, you know, it helps ensure that we're getting the best price for those investments that we are purchasing. And just to make sure everyone realizes too, these are services that are utilized by a variety of jurisdictions, and I'll get to that in just a moment. So with all this in mind, staff developed a scope of services which included a nondiscretionary authority, as well as an initial portfolio of amount of about $25 million. We did include in the scope of services that the city may consider moving to a discretionary approach at a later time, or and/or expanding the size of the portfolio that the investment advisory firm may manage. So the request for proposal was issued on July 6th, and it closed on August 5th. Notice was provided to 266 potential suppliers through the city's website and 534 suppliers through the Georgia Procurement Registry. The city received proposals from seven different firms. One of those firms was deemed non-responsive because they failed to complete the city's proposal letter. The firms were evaluated by the evaluation committee based on four criteria. One, we looked at the firm's background, their organization, and their experience. We looked at the expertise of the personnel involved. We looked at the investment management approach, and we also considered cost. So the top three scoring firms were invited for virtual interviews with the evaluation committee. PFM Asset Management was the highest-scoring firm, and they were, and they are being recommended this evening for contract award. Just to give you a little bit of background about PFM, they've been providing investment advisory services to public entities for 40 years. They have offices in 28 locations, including Atlanta, and they provide investment advisory services to about 540 clients nationwide. They're registered as required under the Investment Advisor Act of 1940, and they've provided their required forms as required by the Securities and Exchange Commission. Currently, they're managing or advising on about $152 billion in total assets. Some of their local clients include the city of La Grange, city of Gainesville, the Georgia Tech facilities, Gwinnett County, just to name a few. All of the proposals that we received from all the different firms were very strong, which made this decision a difficult one. A few of the things that stood out about PFM was their proactive approach to assisting clients through the pandemic, including performing stress testing on the client portfolios to ensure the overall health of the portfolio. They provide training opportunities to clients. They have a very thorough approach to onboarding new clients. This is a new service that the city has never utilized, an external investment advisory firm, so that would be a very important process for us. Their reporting capabilities worked really well, and just the emphasis they placed on customer service. So we are recommending a contract award to PFM for an initial term ending June 30th, 2021, with options to extend for a maximum of five years. The annual cost for the service is $25,000 or 10 basis points, based on the size of the portfolio. They'd be managing $25 million in the city's portfolio. If we decide to move more of the portfolio under their management, the total cost would increase, although the unit cost does decrease as the more, the larger the portfolio they manage. We are recommending that funding for this initial amount for FY '21 come from the city's operating contingency, which currently has a balance of about $250,000. So with that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Floor is open. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. The, just a question on the fees, the $25,000 or 10%. Does that change depending on the value of the portfolio, or is it the lower of the two?
It's 10 basis points for the first $25 million, and if we were to expand the size of the portfolio that they manage, the cost would decrease in terms of a unit cost, but the total cost that we'd be paying then would increase. So just for instance, if we moved up to $50 million, the annual cost would equate to nine basis points, which would be $45,000.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you. My question is regarding the length of the contract, five years. What is the logic behind, you know, behind five years versus, for example, three-years contract? Is any advantage to have five, or is the same thing, and we can shorten to three years and then evaluate, maybe, maybe go to the market again, see what's going on in the market, and then renew for another X number of years with the same, or find someone who, by the time, can provide better service at a better cost?
So the logic behind five years is that, that's typically standard practice when it comes to the city of Roswell procurement, that we, you know, the work behind going out for procurement, we're looking for a five-year contract. Like I said, those are five options, so we're not tied into a five-year contract with this firm. If we're unhappy with them, the service they provide, we're free to end the contract at any point. We just, I would say that, you know, we just have to weigh the cost and the benefit of going back out to the market and requesting proposals again, and whether we think that the return on that time and effort and request of the suppliers would benefit beyond what we see today.
Councilman Plurale.
Thank you. So, Mr. Luckett, I'm certainly supportive of your, of the choice, the choice you make, both to enter into this type of advisor, as well as, as well as the one that you and procurement have selected. I, I share kind of a question or concern like Councilmember Zapata's. So I guess clarification that I'd like is, with it being an option on our side, I've been told, there have been some other things that we've had, we've been told that in the past, and then what we found is there had to be some proof of negligence or something along those lines to back out. So what I guess I'm curious about is, after three years or four years, if there's not interest in moving forward with that one, is, can the city decide for any reason to not, to not choose to move forward, or does there have to be a very specific documented, agreed-upon reason?
My understanding, and I'll let Mr. Davidson correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the option, so these contracts, this contract, if it's awarded, would renew every year on June 30th, and if we were not satisfied with the service we were getting, or if we decided to bring the service back in-house, that we would be able to terminate the contract at that point and move to some other option. Is that accurate, Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you. I think it's actually better than that if you take a look at Section 6.1, where it says, if at any time after commencement of services, city of Roswell shall, in its sole reasonable judgment, determine that the services are inadequate, unsatisfactory, no longer needed, or substantially non-conforming, city may terminate disagreement upon 30 days' notice to the contractor.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Councilmember Tizer.
I was going to make a motion, but I think Councilmember Zapata has comments.
You can go ahead and make the motion, then we can have comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Tizer. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Judy, any further questions or comments? Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you. Since we rushed the motion on the second year, is this going to be discussed again at the mayor and council regular meeting?
Yes, it would require mayor and council approval at the next.
I would drop back at the mayor and council regular meeting about the three and five years. Thank you.
Okay, so we have motion on the floor to approve, move forward in a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, discussion of adjustment to the occupation tax renewal process. Mr. Luckett.
I'm going to share my screen here. Can everyone see that okay? So this item is related to one component of our occupation tax renewal process, and this is a guidance item. So this has to do with the actual application process. When we do renewals for businesses each year, we're looking to, planning on making a change that we think will make the process a little less complicated for our businesses, less complicated for our staff, and just kind of improve the overall efficiency of the process. So I wanted to explain briefly kind of what that change would look like. So as the slide says, to calculate occupation tax for the annual renewal process, currently today, businesses must provide these pieces of information to us. So they provide prior year actual gross receipts as well as deductions. They provide their prior year estimated gross receipts. At that point, we do a true-up calculation so that if there is any difference between what they estimated versus what the actual gross receipts were, there may be an additional charge, or there may be a credit issued, depending on how that varies. Additionally, businesses provide current year estimated gross receipts, as well as their anticipated deductions, and they also provide the number of employees at that business. So here's an example of what our current application, renewal application looks like. So this whole side of the screen is all about the prior year. So you can see they're providing their actual gross receipts, their deductions go here, the exemption, and then we get to the actual taxable gross receipts, and we compare that to the estimated gross receipts that they provided the prior year. In this case, you can see there was a difference. So this particular business had a credit of $16.80. So then they come over to the upcoming year and provide an estimate and gross receipts, any deductions, the exemption is applied, and then multiplied by the tax rate, which here got them to $30 in occupation tax, the number of employees, and then our regulatory fee, administrative fee, and you get to a total due. So that's how the current application process is set up. What we are recommending is to change the application process so that businesses would base their renewal on their prior year gross receipts and deductions only. So we would eliminate the need to estimate and to true-up on an annual basis. So in effect, as we get into our upcoming renewal process for 2021 in January, for the business to renew, they would just need to provide us with prior year actual gross receipts, and that's what we would base their occupation tax for the upcoming year on. They would also continue to provide their number of employees. So here's an example, so you can see, basically cut in half in terms of the application and the amount of information they would need to provide for that. That is pretty much the summation of the change. So like I said, we feel like this will make the process less complicated for our businesses. We did, I did speak with Roswell Lean just to kind of run this idea by them and to get that business perspective, and they were supportive of this move. Also, we felt like it just improved the efficiency for our staff. You know, we get a lot of questions, and, you know, a lot of times, we work with businesses to kind of walk them through the application process, as we think it'll improve the efficiency for staff. We also think and know that if we make this change, it will enable us to utilize our financial system in a more efficient way by allowing us to process online renewals through it. So we think that'll improve the overall process. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mayor Henry.
Mr. Luckett, I've got several questions for you. One is, let me just clarify that, and let me also read our ordinance again, that occupational taxes are classified in accordance to the major line of businesses defined by the North American Industrial Classification System, and profitability classes are assigned in accordance with statistics of income, business income, returns, United States Treasury Department, or Internal Revenue Service. So there's a number of tables that are available. The Finance Department shall review assignment of businesses' profitability classes on a biannual basis, and shall administratively reassign businesses as necessary to the, excuse me, them most accurate profitability class. So, Mr. Luckett, are you telling me that that is what you are proposing here?
Yes, that we would continue the process as it is today.
Thank you, Mr. Luckett. And then the next question that I have for you is, so going into, for example, I own a small business, so in 2021, I will have an occupational tax due for my business, and that will be based on 2020 or whatever is less. So if my business went down in 2020, then in 2019, it would be less, but it would never be more. Is that correct?
That is correct. If we're following, you know, kind of the direction that the council spoke about at the work session, if we want to make this, if we wanted to make this upcoming year revenue neutral for the city, then yes.
And that would be my personal wish. I don't know what the wish of council is, but then also, so it would be revenue neutral going into this next year, but then we would base the occupational tax on the previous year actuals. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So going into the following year, the actuals will actually be based on COVID numbers, correct?
That's correct. So for 2021 renewals, which are starting in January, that would be based on 2020, which includes all the activity from COVID, yes.
Okay, so basically, we are easing on into this, and that we are very conscientious about not causing our businesses additional harm, that we recognize. causing our businesses additional harm, that we recognize COVID, we recognize what's going on here, and that we're switching the tables. And and then also, Mr. Luckett, is my understanding that we would need a resolution to confirm this at a future council meeting? Is that correct?
Yes, if the council did decide to cap the upcoming occupation tax year at to the prior year levels, we would need a resolution from council.
Thank you, Mr. Luckett.
Councilmember Plermo.
Thank you. So, Mr. Luckett, I have I have two questions. So first off, it sounds like what you're proposing is purely focused on just how is determined what amount they would owe basically on the on what the expectation of gross receipts is. And because if I'm understanding that that correctly, it's currently they they give an estimate and then you true it up in case their estimate was wrong. And what you're proposing is instead of doing an estimate with a true up for the future forward looking, instead it's just purely previous looking. So in 2021, they'd look at 2020 numbers. And then I guess my question is, do you see more more similar cities and nearby cities doing the forward looking with a with a true up? Or do you see more just looking at the previous year?
I see both. Just as one example, the city of Milton, they do the same thing in terms of basing their occupation tax off of the prior year gross receipts only.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess that that makes sense and I appreciate that. And now, how does it work when a business changes their changes their name or has some type of reorganization things? Does that does that have an impact or play into things when looking at the previous year?
So those are some things that we would be working out. So for instance, you know, if a new business comes to the city, they would they would be required to estimate for the remainder of the year that they start in. So that would be kind of one piece that we would have to set in place for those circumstances that come up. In the particular example that you're giving, if they are reorganizing, or basically if they're required to get a new business license, based on any changes they're making to their business, then they would be treated as a new business. So they would have to estimate for the remainder of that current year.
And then there'd be, would there be a true up for a new business if their estimate, when their estimate is off?
So probably what would happen is, so they would estimate for the coming year, and then when they get to the next renewal time, then they're basing that renewal off of the prior year, which is going to be that proportion or partial year at that point. So we're not planning to do a true up at, you know, once they've estimated for that initial year.
And so I want to, I want to see some more of these details and really understand exactly how these would work with some 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 numbers just to understand it. But but again, I'm certainly going to be supportive of staff's recommendation with this.
Councilmember Spada.
Thank you. Back to your presentation on page three. And kind of following up the reasoning from council member Palermo about new businesses, brand new businesses, just go incorporated and apply for the first time to a business license. Are we going to go back to similar to the table number, page number three on your presentation? For the first time, a brand new business. And then after that, when they have the historic gross receipt data, then we use that? How you would treat brand new business?
So for a new business, no, we were not going to do a true up. So that's certainly something we could consider. But the plan was was that they would, the business, the new business, would provide their estimated gross receipts for that current year in which they begin. And then they would provide the actuals when they got to the next renewal period. But that's certainly something we can consider if that's a direction that the council would like to go.
And they they estimate $100,000 for the 2021 year. And then they ended up with half of that. Are they going to get reimbursed whatever they pay extra based on the estimated that they were too optimistic on the gross receipt? But then the reality was that they have half of that. How are you going to treat these cases?
So in that situation, no, it would just be an initial estimate. And there would be no true up at the at the end of that year.
Okay, so if they overestimated, they were optimistic more than enough, then they would just have to pay extra the first year. And then move on to the second year and just use the actual gross receipt?
And they would see, they would see that right size in the following year's renewal. So when they renewed the next year, they would be reporting their actual gross receipts. So the occupation tax they pay in the following year would be based on those actual gross receipts that might have been different than their estimate.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you. I'm just a little bit confused. If I started business in 2020, when I go to file my return in March of 2021, I know what my 2020 sales actual were. And I just write that down on the news shorter form and pay it. That's all that would be required, I think.
That's correct. But I guess what I was referring to were those situations where you may have a new business that hasn't generated any gross receipts. And they're a new business in Roswell, so they're estimating for the remainder of the year in which they start.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. I think I think it's a great idea to streamline this like this going forward. And I think what the questions are is that first year that when people are starting and they're estimating, they're either going to estimate high or low or right on the money. And and that was the question is the ones that should get a refund, we probably, you know, is there a way that we can look at giving them that credit back? And can, you know, on the other side, if somebody estimated too low, can we, you know, bill them for that that amount?
We can certainly look into doing that. The only thing I would say is we're kind of in, if it's the direction we need to go, we certainly can. But we're we're introducing more complication into the process because we're treating you know, those new businesses basically would be completing a different renewal than all the other businesses would be in that upcoming year. So if that's the direction that the council would like us to go, we can see how we can fit that together. But that would be my concern is that we're, you know, kind of taking away some of the the gains that we're making in complication and efficiency for the businesses and the staff.
Councilmember Plermo.
Thank you. So if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, it sounds like, because because I thought Councilman Tizer asked a good question, which was kind of going around in my head where I wasn't fully understanding the timeline. So it sounds like in Roswell, the way it is, is I started business February of 2020. I pay taxes in 2020 for my 2020 revenue. And then so, okay, so I'm seeing, so I'm understanding that part correctly. And then so I I think we're all in agreement that this this new model that you're proposing for any existing business that that's been in existence is going to be spot on. So in 2021, I'm going to pay based on whatever my 2020 revenue was. So no questions there. That makes that makes total sense to me and and seems very logical. And so I think I think where the the part that just is, I still want to discuss more, is for that brand new business. Because what I see is there's no reason that they should optimistically guess. I mean, maybe it sounds to me like they should say, even if they expect their revenue to be $10 million, they should say their revenue is going to be $100, because there's no true up. And bottom line is that they accidentally guessed too high, the way the way you're proposing, they wouldn't get that money back, which which if they guessed too high, we want to make sure they absolutely get their money back. So that's where my initial reaction is, if everything I'm, if I'm, everything I'm saying is I'm understanding it all correctly, I would think we'd want to move to this, this be the default for any existing business, anything that had that prior revenue. But anytime that's the first time, that's where it sounds to me like it should just be the the estimate, which is what you're proposing. You're already proposing it's an estimate for a new business. So I guess the one, the one area where in disagreement is the true up. Because again, I don't think it's fair, the brand new business estimates their revenue, they say it's going to be $500,000. It's really only $100,000. I think there should have been a true up that gives them a credit. Because what what I've heard is the 2021 at least will be correct. Or 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 I guess I should say not necessarily correct, but it'll be a more fair and logical system. In which case, we're in agreement there. It's just, I feel they paid more than they should have in 2020.
Mayor Henry.
I might be missing something. And that's, that could be. However, we're penalizing a new business. So if a new business starts up in 2020 and they pay what they're anticipating, their 2021 taxes, occupational tax are going to be based on the actuals of 20. So and that's the same way it goes for everyone. So if in 20, you made $100,000, in 21, you made 200, and 22, you made 500. And 23, you made 100. In 23, you'd still have to pay for that 500. So am I missing something, Mr. Luckett? Because I feel like we would be penalizing a new business because they're going to base their taxes on what they think they're going to make, but then their next year taxes are going to be based on the actuals, just like everyone else. So can you tell me what I'm missing?
It sounds like the concern is for a new business that when they come in to apply for their occupation tax, they're going to have to estimate for, say they come in in June, they're going to have to estimate for the remainder of that calendar year. And if that calendar year ends and they made less than they anticipated or estimated, I think the concern on some of the council members' parts is that 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 business should you receive a credit if they pay too much or have to pay additional if they estimated too low. And so we would be right sizing that initial year. And then when they renewed for the next year, they would be basing it on that prior year moving forward.
Okay, I got it.
Councilmember Welzy.
Yes, thank you. And yes, I I understand what the mayor is saying, and that is kind of my concern, that if a business A starts in in June and estimates $5 million, and they pay $5 million for, you know, June of 2020, and then they pay for their occupation tax, you know, in 2021, based on that $5 million, they are in effect being paid paying taxes twice unless there's some roll up or accountability. So I guess my question is, would it be possible to pay? I think there's an administrative fee or registration fee the first year and then pay the, you know, your first year's taxes the following year in 2021? Does that make sense?
The only concern when that approach is, is we would be treating businesses differently and and we're not allowed to do that with state law. And I I get what you're saying. I think if I could maybe try and clarify this a little bit. So if that new business starts in June of 2020, the tax that they pay at that point when they open, they're paying their 2020 occupation tax. When they renew in 2021, based on the prior year, they're paying their 2021 occupation tax. So they're not necessarily being taxed twice.
Right.
It's just that number, the basis, that number or the basis is being used twice at the beginning. If that makes sense.
It does.
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you, Gary. Director Luckett, just off the top of your head, we have a $100,000 standard exemption in any given year on average. How many new businesses start in Roswell that start with over $100,000 worth of gross receipts? Just to get an idea of how big this potential issue could be.
I really am not sure. I'd hate to. I don't feel comfortable giving an estimate because I'm really not sure. So I can get that information for you though.
I think that I think that would help us because I suspect there's not a ton of them. And and it might make this easier to work through. So since you're not asking, I don't think you're asking for a vote, you're just asking for discussion. Maybe that might be something you could help us all with when we do bring this forward.
Okay.
Councilmember Spada.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't see that complicated for the first year, let's say, you know, January 1st. So it's not that complicated. Maybe it would be great, Mr. Luckett, that you can, with a solution to propose, what would be the solution for that to be fair for the first year of the brand new business so they don't overpay or underpay occupational business tax. I don't think it's that complicated. Would be great if we can hear about the option to treat in this case new businesses.
Okay.
Councilmember Plermo.
Thank you. And because, yeah, again, I I think that it will be helpful because again, it does seem to me that just for new businesses, there'd be that true up. Because I I feel that is the the way to ensure somebody's not overpaying or or underpaying or anything like that. In it, Mr. Luckett, in addition to seeing kind of how many, how many businesses end up having above that $100,000 in that in that first year, I'd also be curious to look back and see what just, just from a, you know, a order of magnitude standpoint, what has been the largest amount of revenue in a first year? As well as what has been the largest difference between estimated and actual? So what's been that largest true up? One way or the other, whether it's a credit or a debit. So those are just some things I think would be helpful in addition to Councilman Tizer's good question.
Okay.
Mayor Henry.
Mr. Luckett, can you give us an idea, maybe not tonight, but in the future? For example, let's say a new Maserati dealership wants to locate in Roswell. Okay, do you, when you look at what they are estimating their first year of occupational tax, do you have some kind of guideline that you can go by that says to Mr. Maserati, you know what, this is a pipe dream, this isn't exactly what's going to happen here. We know your estimated sales. Is there anything that you can predict on something like that? Because that's where the dollar amount is going to be different. It's not going to be in a restaurant opening up or a home business opening up. That's chump change. But if if a new car dealership opens up in Roswell, is, do you have some safeguards in place when they come in and you say you you're going to owe occupational taxes here? And we're estimating it at X dollars? And you can have that conversation with them? Do you have something you can judge that on?
We do. I mean, we've, this has been in place for several years now. So we have information on, you know, what the average gross receipts are for certain types of businesses. And in those instances where we may have a new business or a renewing business that comes in and they provide information that really doesn't you know, make a lot of sense when you think about what type of business it is. Our staff does not at the time press them. We may ask them about it, and we may ask for clarification. But if they're adamant about what they're submitting, then we accept that. But then that gets folded into the audit process that we have ongoing as well. So if that situation were to arise, you know, that might, that would be flagged later on for you know, needing further review, you know, once we had, once that actuals were available.
Yes, so I think I think in the first year, we do need to have something that trues it up. Because, you know, you, we can't, I don't, I don't think we can, but you might be able to, but you sounded a little iffy about it. So we just opened up an apartment complex last year in Sun Valley. A huge apartment complex. So I don't know what they estimated their occupational taxes or what we think it should be. So as we go forward, you know, we've got a small, smaller, much smaller apartment complex coming in this next year. I don't know that they'll be occupied by next year, but as those come in, I would feel much more comfortable not leaving that occupational tax behind us. So and like I said, it's not the small mom and pop things that are going to break us. It's it's going to be one of those huge, like the Sun Valley, that's an enormous complex. And I just want to make sure that they don't underestimate their occupational tax. And then it's a chunk of change. So if you would just help us with that going forward, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Councilmember Plermo.
Thank you. And I certainly agree with with the points the mayor may have brought up on on where really this is relevant and where it isn't. And so, Mr. Luckett, just out of curiosity on that, so I, because I think it kind of expands. And so, Mr. Luckett, just out of curiosity on that, uh, so I, because I think it kind of expands on the mayor's point as well. If, if I may, if, if I'm opening a small business and I'm, if, whether I give my estimate as, let's say I just have one employee, and whether I give my estimate as $1,000 in revenue or $100,000 in revenue for the remainder of the year, because we have a $100,000 exemption, either way, it's the same for me. Is that, is that right?
Right.
Okay. And so, so because that, that, that definitely gives a lot of wiggle room for, for the, really that, that small mom and pop, especially knowing the, so even if there's a true up, knowing the true up's only relevant when above, above $100,000.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, thank you. You know, just one other comment. I, I do think we've all talked about one of our goals as being, wanting our city to be business friendly and economic development is one of our goals. So, you know, when we're looking at whatever this policy is, I think we need to look at it through the lens, through the lens of attracting businesses. You know, attracting that Maserati dealership or that technology company that's going to employ 250 people. So I just don't want to make it so complicated and so, and such a burden that it, you know, detracts rather than, than meets the goals we want it to. So I guess I'd be curious to see what other cities do for businesses when they come in mid-year. Just so that it's not a deterrent. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Luckett. Moving on to item number seven, presentation of fiscal year 2021 first quarter investment report. Mr. Luckett.
Thank you. Let me share my screen here. So this is our first quarter investment report for FY 2021. Just as a reminder, the city does have an investment policy in place. And as is shown here in the report, the objectives of the city's investment portfolio are listed here in priority order. So first one being safety, to make sure that no losses, that we have no losses for regarding principle of our city's investments, compliance with state and federal law, liquidity to make sure the city has enough funds on hand to meet operating requirements. And then finally, income, so to maximize the amount of interest income within the constraints of those objectives. So the point of this presentation is just to provide you an update on this current status of our investment portfolio. So as you can see here at the bottom, the interest rate, effective interest rate of the portfolio as of September 30th was 0.67%. Compare that to the one-year treasury at 0.13%. This next page also kind of gives you a graphical comparison of what that looks like and how it's moved over the last 12 months. So as you can see, obviously because of the pandemic, when federal rates were dropped, the city's investment portfolio, portfolio kind of followed suit in a much slower fashion. So today, we're still about 54 basis points higher than the one-year treasury benchmark. The chart here at the bottom just gives you an idea of the various investment tools that we have and how that's, how our funds are split among those tools. So you can see about 50% of our portfolio is currently invested in Georgia Fund One. That is a lot higher than we've typically kept at in the past. And the main reason, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One reason is that as we transitioned into this pandemic and kind of uncertainty for our finance, finances, we did want to make sure that we maintained plenty of extra liquidity just in case. And Georgia Fund One is a very liquid investment tool. The other reason for that is that as, as the Fed dropped rates, a lot of our securities that were callable were called. And so knowing that we were moving to, potentially moving to hiring a investment advisory firm, the thought was to maintain some of those funds here in Georgia Fund One so that as we brought on this investment advisory firm, we could kind of build a portfolio from the ground up. So otherwise, our funds, we have about 22% of our funds in bank deposits, 16% in federal agencies, 11% in CDs, and then 2% in municipal bonds. This next page just gives you, breaks that down a little bit further into some of the various federal agencies that we are invested in, as well as the CDs, Georgia Fund One, and our bank deposits, and the percent split across those. At the bottom of this page, it gives you a look back for the last year at our total investments and how that's changed over the course of the year, as well as the split among the various investment vehicles that we utilize. The next page shows you how liquid our portfolio is. And because we have so much in, currently housed in Georgia Fund One, you can see that our average length of maturity for the portfolio as a whole is less than one year. But then as you get into some of our federal agencies and certificates of deposit, those extend a little bit, or beyond two years. Below here, you see the maturity schedule. So you can see that about 70%, 71% of our portfolio is liquid within one day. Beyond that, we have our investments that go out to five years and you can kind of see how that's scheduled out. Finally, these last few pages provide a comprehensive list of the various investments that the city owns, whether it's a CD, a federal agency bond, or municipal bond, as well as the amount that's in our bank deposits and Georgia Fund One. That is our investment report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Floor's open for questions. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Luckett.
Thank you very much.
I think we're, okay, we're moving on to recreation and parks. Item number eight, consideration to approve resolution for a land and water conservation fund grant. Mr. Malone.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. This item is a request for a pre-application for the Land Water Conservation Fund Grant. This grant would be specifically tied to the construction of an outdoor covered training space at the Henry Park location. This is a matching grant program which would require the partnership with the Roswell Youth Baseball Association as well as the city. The application deadline for this is October 31st, 2020. So we are in the process of compiling all the information, but this would be the next step for us in this process. Additionally, just to note, this project would fall within our tier one recommendation for the, our department's five-year strategic master plan regarding outdoor training spaces for athletic programs. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Floor's open. Councilmember Judy.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Judy. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Tyser. Any further questions or discussion? If in favor, please raise your hands. Any news, unanimous? Thank you. Thanks, David. Item number nine, notification of emergency procurement for Don White Park. Mr. Leatherman.
As Mr. Palmer said, Mayor and Council, we had some emergency repairs to a dock down at Don White Park. This is a notification process that's required when we activate the emergency procurement process. There are photos in the packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions that Mayor and Council may have. This is an information item that we're required to report back on.
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Spada.
So, um, do you know the cause of the, the problem and how old is this board here that we need to be fixed and replaced?
I don't know directly the age associated with the dock itself. The cause of the problem is some dry rot in the decking. And then we had some of the floats on the bottom of the dock were actually punctured, and so they started filling with water. And a lot of it is associated with traditional wear and tear of the facility. You'll see this in docks and river systems, especially fluctuating water, whether it be ocean bearing or river bearing docks like this. You can get damage over time. But looks like mostly to be wear and tear associated with a combination of dry rot and wear out of the, the float devices underneath the dock itself.
Do we have a way to assess the condition of the float devices before we get to this condition so eventually we can avoid any potential accident and then replace before we see these kind of pictures in here?
The float conditions essentially, so essentially you've got large, they've moved away from the styrofoam supports under the docks and they're essentially hardened plastic. And so they're either working or they're not working. So if you get even a single puncture into that float system, it will start to flood and take on water. The challenge is under these docks are fairly large and substantial. You've got about 11 of those. So the, the other areas, you could have a puncture in one or two of them and you don't notice it. And the only way to get down and see it is actually to take the decking completely off and then be able to tell if it's filled with water or not. So it's not necessarily something that you can assess on a regular basis until you start to see some failure with multiple systems underneath the dock. The alternative is to pull them out of the water. The challenge that we have with the large docking systems along the Chattahoochee is we build them to support our larger vessels. So the seven and eight man boats, especially for our paddle teams. And so they're fairly large. And so you could even damage them by taking them out of the water and cause undue harm to the dock system itself just by trying to inspect it. So there are a bit of a challenge when you're dealing with something in the water like this.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the Council? Thank you, Mr. Levin. Leatherman, moving on to item number 10. Consideration for a resolution in support of data plants for the city's future landscaping projects. Councilmember Plorable.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. And so I'd like to make a statement and then we'll, and then we'll share a video. I know we had the technology issue last time, but, but, uh, staff and Olivia especially is confident we can, we've, we figured it out. So first off, I really appreciate everyone's time to discuss this item again. I am not requesting a vote on this tonight. So really instead, what I would just like to do is really share this video and, uh, and really just as, as a reminder of, of the great benefits that, that making progress from a native plant standpoint can, can bring. Because really, I think what you'll see and what we discussed last time and want to continue to discuss is that this is really a valuable discussion because it gives us the opportunity to save money on ongoing maintenance, to really improve stormwater issues. I'm not sure and don't think it would have prevented the extreme floods we just recently had, but, but there, there is a lot that shows it does really just improve that stormwater runoff in, in general, along with many other environmental benefits. I also really would like to thank Councilmembers Zapata and Hall for their continued support in this topic. I'd also like to thank Councilmembers Wilson and Judy for, for really their open mindness and hope we can, we can all really work together to make some real improvement for our environment. So I've, I just want to let, give everybody a, a status update. As I mentioned, I've documented the concerns that were shared last meeting. And, uh, and I, I really do feel there's some, there were some really constructive comments and feedback made that I think we really can, can address those. And also some of the really engaged residents that, including some you'll see on this, uh, this video, we'll, we'll be meeting more with, with council members as well as staff to hopefully find common grounds. As, as I mentioned, you know, Council having some great feedback last time. In my discussions with staff, I found, uh, found staff definitely very helpful and, uh, and knowledgeable on a lot of these topics. Again, I'd say a big disagreement was the, uh, the, the push or the request for, for anything related to, uh, to really what, what I'm proposing, what we're discussing, to be just more of a, of a hope without actually having any teeth. So again, I am hoping that we'll work together, we'll find some, some real, real progress together, something that does have teeth, that involves compromises and really does move, uh, move really our city forward. So that's, that's basically where, where I wanted to kind of leave it off. I'd love, I'd love some, any feedback that you share, any, any more concerns or any other issues that you, that you have, certainly share those as well. I'm sure that, as I met, Councilmember Wilson had a great conversation with her. Councilman Judy, I know, uh, has, has had some great conversations with, with residents as, as has this entire mayor and council. And definitely appreciate all the, the good feedback. So I just wanted to give everybody that status. And with that, before we, before we turn it open for discussion, Olivia, if you could go ahead and just play this video for everybody to, uh, to see about native plants.
Oh my gosh, I was just out here last week telling someone we didn't have any. So, ah, it's a beautiful day. Yay, yay, yay.
Roswell's natural beauty and unique setting are undeniable.
Okay.
I just wanted to make an announcement. We've got about four minutes until we have to do a hard stop of this meeting. So I, I see it's 10 minutes long. You want to, you want to continue with the video and, and, or you want to have some discussion?
Yeah, if, if we only have four minutes, I get this is important one. I want to make sure everybody's seeing it. But knowing it's 10 minutes and we only have four minutes before the hard stop, if we could just probably have brief, four-minute discussion or, or three-minute discussion and we can watch this video at a later, uh, later public meeting. Thank you, Gary. Let me know.
Floor's open, the Council's in. Councilmember Judy.
No, I, I I had some good conversations with some of the folks that were on that video over the last couple of weeks. And, um, you know, I think that we've had some real honest conversations about getting, getting some good wins for us and put us in a place in which we can make a difference. And that way, I, I believe staff will be meeting with them at some point. And I know that they'll have a fruitful conversation and, and I look forward to hearing about it because I, I think that if we're able to look at this, you know, I, I said in the last meeting, I thought the last resolution was a bit strong. I think there's some, there are some teeth that we can put in, that we can get done, both financially and operationally. And I think staff and this group, and, and then ultimately Council will be able to compromise on some good pieces to this, to move forward and, and get some wins. So I think that this is a good conversation to continue and I'm glad we're taking our time to make sure we're getting all the input. So appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from the Council? Councilmember Plorable, do you have anything else?
No, I appreciate the time, everybody, and look forward to the continued discussion. And when we do eventually get to all watch that video together.
Okay, we've got, uh, we're going to go ahead and stop now. We've got the Public Safety Committee items that we'll bring back in some fashion. But I'll talk to the chief about those items and find the best solution for that. So we'll go ahead and adjourn, and we'll see you back here at 7 o'clock for our regular meeting. We are adjourned.